Parks Planning Commission Meeting on December 7th, please. I have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Present.
Commissioner Vanderwell?
Here.
Commissioner Brock?
Here.
Commissioner Carey?
Present.
Commissioner Fewans?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Shabazz?
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick?
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Services Director Armando Ranelles?
Here.
Have a... This is a place for a public comment. Anyone would like to address this commission for any item, they do so. You have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda, please.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
A motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'd like to approve the amendments. We'll review the minutes of November 14th of the study session, please, first.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes of November 14th, Planning Commission Study Session.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we'd like to review the minutes for November 16th of the regular Planning Commission Meeting, please.
Move to approve as submitted.
Second.
A motion and a second. Approve the minutes for the Planning Commission Meeting on November 16th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have an announcement. Any committee report?
Chairman Peterson, members of the Planning Commission, after exhorting you at this Tuesday Study Session to please make sure you were in attendance if possible on December 21st, the applicant has informed us that he is withdrawing that application. Was it a withdrawal?
No, put it on hold.
Put it on hold. So, the... We, you know, being the only business item on the agenda, we are canceling the December 21st Planning Commission Agenda. So, that is the only announcement or committee report.
Thank you. Any information on...
None.
Thank you. Okay, there is no public hearing items, so we'll move right on to the general business, please, and we'll... Act PCN 17-0020, tentative map for a seven lot single lot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commissioners. I'm Jonathan Cummins, Assistant Planner. Case PCN 17-0020 is a tentative map request for a seven lot, single-family residential subdivision on a parcel of 1.96 acres in size in the SF7 zoning district. It's on the southeast corner of Brea Circle and Spanish Springs Road, outlined in blue on the map. So, staff's able to present the following 12 items for your consideration. Finding T1 requires conformance with the comprehensive plan. Staff believes that this project meets goal MG6 of the comprehensive plan, which encourages compact development, which reduces the cost of infrastructure per capita in new development. Staff also believes that the similarly zoned and similarly developed properties around this particular parcel contributes to that as well. Finding T2 requires that new development conform to the city's street master plan. This development would require a very short cul-de-sac to accommodate the three homes on each side and one on the end. Finding T3, T4, T5, T6, T7, and T8 address issues of basic services, water, utilities, schools, police, transportation, parks, roads, and land use. Finding T9 requires that we notify any affected agencies about those issues. We received letters from Washoe County Department of Health, Washoe County School District, and the Regional Transportation Commission, each of which pointing out that they had no issues. In response to inquiry at the study session on Tuesday, staff reached out to the fire marshal to ask for comments on the six-minute response to the property, and he concurred that the property is well within that distance. Finding T10 also points out that Sparks then would be the primary responder in cases of fire. T11 then comes back to staff's issues with landscaping and architecture, which, if you review the conditions of approval, we'd ask that when the development is... When the building permits are submitted to the city, that they address those issues. Finding T12 requires public notice be given of this item to the public. Posting of the agenda with this item as part of it satisfies that requirement. So, overall, staff recommends that based on these findings, that Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval of this tentative map to the city council, subject to the 16 conditions of approval found in the staff report. So, I'll be happy to take your questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is the applicant here?
Good evening. For the record, Mike Raely with Rubicon Design Group, here representing the project applicant. Also with me is Jason Gillis with Tech Engineering, the project engineer. I think staff did a very good job outlining the project in their staff report, and we're here to address any questions that you might have. We are in agreement with all the conditions.
Any questions of the applicant? I have one. Wasn't there a pipeline that was supposed to be through this property? An old pipeline or something discovered?
I'm going to let the engineer address that. He's pretty much more familiar with that.
For the record, Jason Gillis, Tech Engineering. There is a gas main located within the existing cul-de-sac. We have worked with the gas company, and the improvements that we're proposing won't conflict with the gas main.
Thank you very much. Any further questions?
Mr. Commissioner, I know this is a tentative map. Mike, have you guys... Brea Circle, I'm guessing is the main access point. Are you planning on any improvements for Brea Circle?
No, with only seven lots, that we'll just be improving the intersection with Liam Court, the cul-de-sac will sort of that, but the... There's no other improvements planned for Brea Circle.
Anything further? Thank you very much. I'll bring this back to the commission for discussion and a possible motion, please.
General business.
Nope, general business. Okay.
Any discussion? Not, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Chair?
Mm-hmm.
I move to forward a recommendation of approval to city council of the tentative map for the Liam Court subdivision associated with PCN 17-0020, adopting findings T1 through T12 and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 16 as listed in the staff report. Second.
We have a motion and a second on a discussion? No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to PCN 17-0051. Consideration of a final plan development handbook for Kylie Ranch North Phase 7.
Good evening, Commissioner, Pre-Determining Planning Commissioners. I'm Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. Before you today is a request for approval of a final plan development handbook, which is for Kylie Ranch North Phase 7. The site is approximately 68.7 acres, and it is zoned new urban district. Located on the map here, it's outlined in blue. This would be Kylie Parkway, and Sparks is out here, and this would be Pyramid. Though this is called Phase 7, this is actually the eighth phase to be reviewed in the... On the Kylie North Ranch North Plan Development. As you recall, unlike other plan developments, the Kylie Ranch North is being reviewed and approved incrementally as final handbooks are submitted. The map up here shows you the different phases. We just reviewed this phase a month ago, I think it was. That was Phase 8. This is... The purple here represents Phase 7. The Phase 7 Handbook establishes the development standards, for which there are only two in this plan development. There is low-medium residential, or RLMR, which has a density range of four dwelling units to 7.9, and the other use in this handbook is also open space, which is a little piece along here. Staff has compared the Phase 7 Handbook standards to those in the approved tentative handbook and determined that the development standards in the final handbook are identical to what's in the development standards of the tentative handbook. In reviewing the five criteria that are in the Sparks Municipal Code and NRS, the first one, does not vary the proposed residential density or intensity. The LMR designation has a maximum density of 7.9 units per acre, single-family or detached or cluster housing. The Phase 7 Handbook does not propose any changes to that maximum density. The next criteria is does not vary the proposed ratio of residential to non-residential. This handbook is essentially all residential, except for that 1.85 acres of open space, and that is consistent with the tentative handbook. It does not reduce the common area. This handbook is maintaining that 1.85 acres and does not propose any changes to that. There is no increase in the floor area of the non-residential, because there is no non-residential in this plan development handbook. And the last criteria is there is no increase in the total ground area covered by buildings, nor is there a substantial change in the height of the buildings. The Phase 7 Handbook does not propose any changes that are in the tentative handbook, and the future development will be reviewed through the tentative map process or the conformance review. Based on these five substantial compliance criteria listed in the Sparks Municipal Code and NRS, staff believes that the final plan development handbook for Kylie Ranch 7, Phase 7, is in substantial compliance with the tentative handbook as previously approved by the city council. Therefore, staff is recommending Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Karen, I was looking at Section 2.5 of the handbook. Looks like it's page 2-21. It's the trail section.
Uh-huh.
When I was reading through the handbook, there was a policy in there that kind of caught my eye, where it was talking about, "The city of Sparks shall be responsible for the maintenance of all sidewalks, trails, within the rights-of-way landscape buffers, public parks, and regional trails within this phase of the development." I was kind of curious if we have an... If there's an estimate that exists of what kind of the annual maintenance costs would be for the city to maintain the regional trail in this section. Probably don't have it on you, but...
I do not have that on me. I don't... I do not know. Do you have any idea? I have no idea.
Maybe as a follow-up, maybe what I'll ask is, was that maintenance costs included in the fiscal analysis for this development, for this handbook, or when the tentative?
Well, it was part... The fiscal analysis was part of the tentative handbook. They did not require to have a fiscal analysis for this individual phase, because the fiscal analysis, it covered the entire development. So, it was looked at as the big picture, not the incremental pieces that we've been reviewing.
So, would the regional trail maintenance costs be part of the parks' maintenance costs in that fiscal analysis from the tentative?
Yes, it would be.
Okay. Thank you.
The regional trail, if you look at the map on the following page, 22-22, the regional trail goes along the eastern boundary and along the Lazy 5 Parkway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further questions? Thank you, Karen. Is the applicant here?
Good evening. Once again, Mike Raely with Rubicon Design Group. For the record, here representing KM2 Development. With me tonight is Lois Brown with KM2 Development as well. I think Karen did a very thorough job in her report. This is essentially just carrying over the tentative, you know, the final handbook without any changes. So, we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for the applicant?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Mike, on page 1.8 of the final development handbook, it shows the flood zones. The majority of it is in flood zone X, and there's a little corner that runs along the trail that's in the flood zone A. Is there going to be homes in there? Are you going to be bringing in some fill?
That will be addressed with the tentative map. We are looking at doing a LOMAR in that area to remove that area. Once the new drainage improvements are put in place, that would take that out of the flood zone.
Okay.
Anything further?
Mike, do you have any idea what the maintenance costs would be for the regional trail?
It's the trail. I meant to actually address that. I apologize. It's fairly low maintenance intensive, for lack of a better term. It's essentially a large sidewalk, and the LMA, the Landscape Maintenance Association, is responsible for maintaining the landscaping along the trail, which is really the most intensive part of the maintenance. So, it's very little cost to the city of Sparks in terms of maintenance, and that was included in the original fiscal analysis.
Because the regional trail must be concrete, so it's low maintenance.
Right. Yeah, I think there were some standards in there that was talking about, it's, you know, one tree for every 40 linear feet, and then like a bush for every tree.
Yeah, and that's, like you say, that's all maintained by the Landscape Maintenance Association, so that cost doesn't get passed on to the city of Sparks.
No, all we do is maintain the trail itself, the individual trail with two feet on either side of the trail. That's all of our responsibility for the city.
Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. We'll bring it back to the commission here for possible discussion and a possible motion, please. Any discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, a couple of comments for the record. Sorry, I'm kind of on a tangent about the regional trails. I just know from my experience serving on the Parks and Recreation Commission that within Spanish Springs, we have a great regional trail system. It's a great asset for the community, and I think that this will be a great addition to that trail, will kind of provide that final link when it gets developed. I just know, just knowing how limited our budgets are with the city and with our Parks and Rec budget and our park maintenance, I would encourage that this commission and staff take a look at that when the tentative maps come through to kind of make sure that we're, you know, we minimize those costs. I know there's been some developments to the south of Kylie North that the city's had to kind of go back in and redo some of the sidewalks, some of the maintenance, but I appreciate the discussion tonight, and thanks for putting it on the record.
We understand your concern in your comments. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, prepared to make a motion. I move to forward to the city council a recommendation of approval of PCN 17-0051, because the final handbook for Phase 7 of the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development is in substantial compliance with the tentative Kylie Ranch North Plan Development Handbook and based upon the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
A second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion carries. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to BCN 17-0059. Karen, again, is that you?
Yep, that's me. Good evening, Chairman Peterson and Planning Commission. I'm Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. Before you today is a request for approval of the building elevations for an approximately 18,000 square foot new commercial building, which is located in Zone E of the Legends Marina Plan Development Handbook. You can see on the site plan here, the vicinity map, it's outlined in blue, the general area of where this project will be located. The project is located in the Legends, and the proposed site is north of the two hotels that are under construction. It is located on the western portion of... Or the western boundary. Here's the western boundary of the Legends. The handbook for the Legends at Marina states that architectural elevation shall be subject to the review and approval by the Planning Commission, excluding interior plaza storefronts. That's why this is before you today. The proposed site for the use is 6.2 acres, located on the Legends Bay Drive, which... Here's Legends Bay Drive. The proposed new use is a Paul Everett recreational vehicle dealership. The operations will be sales of RVs and parts, including some minor RV repairs. A display area is proposed along the Legends Bay Drive. An RV dealership is a permitted use in the Sparks Marina Plan Development Handbook. Before the construction of the building, the site plan and building will be reviewed through the administrative review process. Let me pull up the elevations. Here are the building elevations proposed or presented to you tonight. The proposed elevations conform to the Legends at the Sparks Marina Plan Development and also the city of Sparks design standards. The proposed elevations incorporate a variety of facade materials and colors in a palette consistent with the existing buildings in the Legends. The building walls are articulated using colors and plane changes, along with height and material variations on all the exterior sides. The stucco along the top of the building will be scored to match the other buildings in the Legends. These materials and colors are consistent with and complementary to the existing buildings' colors and materials in the Legends Sparks Legends Shopping Center. For these reasons, staffs believe that the proposed building elevations comply with the standards in the Legends at the Sparks Marina Plan Development Handbook and recommend that the Planning Commission approve these architectural elevations. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions?
Also, the applicants are here tonight, too.
Mr. Chairman, I believe there was some concern before about basically egress and just traffic from all of these rather large RVs, being able to negotiate the traffic circles and whatnot that are in that area. Was there any decision as to... Or any research done as to, you know, as far as access between those areas and where they would be going?
That would be a review with the administrative review. Before you tonight, you are looking at the architectural elevations, but staff will address that when we review the administrative review, the site plan, and the actual construction of the building. That would be an item that we'd be concerned with. Those... The roundabouts were designed to accommodate trucks and including fire trucks, so I can't imagine that an RV is any larger than a fire truck. So, it should not be an issue.
We must understand. Thank you, Karen, for answering that. We must understand. We're addressing the elevations on this right now. Thank you, Karen. Any further questions? Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening. Jeff McMahon, managing partner of RED Development, representing the partnership group for Legends, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. We've heard Karen's presentation. We concur with it fully. We thank staff for all their efforts. We don't have any additional comments or presentation to give you tonight, but we'll make ourselves available for questions.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir. I'll bring this item back to the commission for a discussion and a possible motion. And discussion. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While we have Jeff at the table, I was just kind of curious. Thanks for not going away. I was just kind of curious, with this RV dealership going in, I know this has nothing pertaining to the elevations, but with this RV dealership going in, will you guys still continue to do those RV sales in like the parking lot in the development moving forward?
No, thanks for the question. I expected some questions. I haven't been up in front of this in board in quite a while, so I took the opportunity to answer any questions you have. No, this will be the, if you want to call it, the permanent location for that RV user. And, excuse me. For a few years. Okay. Yeah, so I've been corrected. They will do it for a few years temporarily.
Okay. Thank you for indulging my curiosity, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I want to refer again. We are an elevations-only study on this, please. Let's keep it that. And since I brought it back to the commission and for discussion, I'd like to say a discussion. I reviewed these elevations quite thoroughly, and I really find them quite attractive and very much within the theme of the Legends, and I think you did some very good work on it. That's my comment. Any further comments on this? If not, I'd like to entertain... Oh, go ahead.
Just point of clarification regarding the elevations. Would it be in the scope of considering elevations to consider window height and where those windows are pointing in regards to over the residential wall there?
Let Karen answer that, can you, Karen?
The windows are on the... The, the, the windows are on the north and south elevations, so, um, the elevation that would be facing the residential would be the west elevation, and there aren't any windows on that side. Huh?
That would be, okay, I see it now.
Yeah, this elevation is the one that would be facing the residential. The windows, and I believe those are only clear-story windows anyway, aren't they, like a clear story? Jeff?
Let me ask Frank real quick.
They're just like a clear story, aren't they? There aren't any, I mean, nobody would actually be up there, would they? Or is that offices up there?
On the west side.
Oh, okay.
So they will be occupied, the business hours are about eight to five during the day, so that you won't be having light in the evening?
Thank you very much for that.
Now, if there are no further discussion items, I will entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the building elevations associated with PCN seventeen dash zero zero five nine for approximately eighteen thousand square feet, new retail building located in Zone E, in fulfillment of the requirements set forth in the Legends of Sparks Marina Plan Development Handbook. Second.
Have a motion and a second on a discussion?
I'll just state for the record, I concur with staff's opinion that the building materials are consistent with the handbook and our design standards. I just think it's cool that we're finally getting an RV dealership. I know that was part of the original plan for Legend. I think it'll be a great, this is a great operator and be a great addition. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Come now, we need to select a second alternate for the Regional Planning Commission. I hope there's somebody entertaining that they would like to take that position.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, I would like to nominate Commissioner Shelley Reed for the second alternate position for the Regional Planning Commission.
Second.
A motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Shelley, welcome. That was nice. Public comment. Seeing none. Any comments from the commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since this will be our last meeting of the year, I just wanted to extend my appreciation to staff for all the hard work that they've done this year, helping keep this commission in line, being available for our calls and comments, and I, I think we do, they do a great job behind the scenes, and just really appreciate staff, all their hard work, and look forward to working with them in the, in the new year. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I would also like to echo that sentiment and also wish the staff and my fellow commissioners a very wonderful holiday season, and also welcome to our new commissioner. I am so glad I'm not the newbie anymore, so. Appreciate that.
I also want to say that I've had the pleasure of working with many staffs, and this is one of the finest I've ever worked with. In addition, I'm glad to see a full house again. Thank you for coming aboard.
No tie votes.
And with that, this will probably, maybe, well, I don't know when our election's going to be, but this, maybe I'll have one more guest chair until we have that election. But I appreciate being a chair, and, and all of you have been very cooperative with me. Thank you very much. With that, if there's no further garbage processing, I say we will adjourn. Thank you very much.